Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, January 28th, 2020. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Sis.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. So we'll start our meeting off as usual with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Marquess, board members. It's great to be here this evening. And so for the public, I'd like to start by letting everyone know that January is School Board Appreciation Month. I don't know if you knew that. I, you know, when, when I talk to folks about how, how I'm enjoying the job or how I think things are going, the first thing I talk about is our team. And what an incredible honor it is to be able to work side by side with each and every one of you. And I'm so excited for our future. I want to thank you all for your service. This is an incredible Board of Education. You all do a tremendous job representing all of our constituents within, within Boulder Valley. And just wanted to start with a heartfelt thank you and just tell you what a joy and an honor it is to work with you each and every day. So I wanted to start there. I would tell you that our school visits are going incredibly well. We had, I finished up two today, was at Louisville Middle this morning and Summit Middle this afternoon. And I want to say that we're at forty-four schools that, out of the fifty-six that we've already visited. I just enjoy these visits so much. It is so great to be able to, to engage directly with our leaders, our staff members, our teachers in our schools, and help, they're helping continuously keep us grounded in the work that needs to happen. And so it's just been a really wonderful opportunity. And like I shared, every time I'm out in a school, it's the place that I feel most at home. And so those are going very, very well. I know several of you will probably speak to this, so I'll only touch on it, but it was an incredible meeting last week between our board and staff and Boulder City Council and staff, and just the synergy that was in the room, the partnership, the alignment between what the city's trying to do and what we're as a board is trying to do is incredible. I look forward to further opportunities to work directly with them. And then finally, board, last, on, on January sixteenth, and we haven't had a chance to address the public since then, we had our latest Latino Parent Advisory Council meeting. And I'm here to tell you that as I think about how this group has evolved in the past year and a half since we've been meeting, I'm so proud. They have developed into three subcommittees to focus on issues that we, as a board and as a district, know we need to work on. And that's social, emotional learning, bullying, looking at special populations, so the underrepresentation of our Latino students in gifted and advanced coursework, and the overrepresentation in regards to identification for special education and for discipline. And then working also, a group has formed in working and reviewing translation services as a district and how we can do a better job. And I would tell you that by empowering this group of, of committed parents and allowing us to push our system, we're getting great feedback. And it's going to really help us make great decisions when it comes to bringing forward our budget and thinking about how our strategic initiative teams are working forward. So I just wanted to thank our Latino Parent Advisory Council and just commend them for getting really involved in ways that they haven't had a chance, I think, to get involved before in pushing our system. I just think it's wonderful as we think about serving all students all together. It's just been a wonderful addition, so I just wanted to thank them. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much. And actually, the school board got together secretly last week, and we want to raise. No, just kidding. We did not get together secretly. Anyway, any comments or questions for Rob?
Tina, I'm going to step out for a bit. I just got an emergency phone call.
Okay. I hope all is well.
Thanks for that, Rob. I agree, our Latino Parent Council is doing great work. Could you explain to me if a parent or if anybody who's on one of our boards needs a translator to meet with a member of the BVSD staff or administration or a teacher? How does that work? What's the procedure they follow?
Sure. So through our communications division, we coordinate those translation services. I will tell you, as we thinking, are thinking about the investments that we make in translation services and the resources and translators we have today, I think that that's one of to make sure that we have the appropriate level of resource. But today, that's, that is communicated and coordinated through our communications division. We actually have a lead translator, Don McGinnis, and he's the one who coordinates that for us. And so I'm happy to provide more details for, for the board if you'd want to know. But, but any questions, Randy is kind of heading that up through communications.
Okay, questions or comments regarding the report?
Well, now I'm curious, how many languages are we able to provide translation services for?
Here's what I can do. I can provide the board a comprehensive update this Friday, so we're not having Randy and folks come up and down, but, but happy to do that for you all.
For the report?
You're right, I was going to say something, but thank you, Rob, and Tina, for putting together the meeting with the city council. I thought it was really productive on both sides. So thank you for that effort, and I look forward to meeting with other city councils around the way. I think we set a good precedent for doing that. So I just wanted to say thank you to the two of you for, for setting that up.
All right, with no more questions for Rob, we'll move on to public participation. We value the, a public comment and issues related to the operation of our schools. And we ask that people who address the board could find your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. We ask you to limit your presentation to two minutes. And also understand that students often attend or review our meetings, so please keep your comments suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through twelfth grade students. So there's a timing system right in front of me. I think it starts out at two and then it counts down. And she'll begin the timer when, Laura will begin the timer when your time begins. And are we doing the yellow card? Okay, for our one speaker? You are going to have a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining, and when you have ten seconds, you will see the orange card. All right. So, we have one speaker this evening, and it is John Zola.
No red cards, right? Before I start, I'm, what, congratulations on your new digs. This is pretty, pretty fancy. Very, very nice. So, and happy School Board Month. My name is John Zola, and I live at 3050 Eighteenth Street in Boulder. I spent most of my career in Boulder Valley School District. I taught it at Baseline when it was a junior high school, at Fairview, and was part of the team that began and created NuVista High School where I finished my career about ten or twelve years ago. I'm here to speak to the Cenitas Academy proposal and charter contract negotiations and its potential impacts on NuVista and district equity goals. NuVista, I believe you know, has proven and continues to prove that a school based on powerful relationships between teachers and students with rigorous learning experiences both in the school and in the community already exists as a choice for Boulder Valley School District students and families. The program is proposed by Cenitas, sounds similar to NuVista, so I wonder why there's a need to replicate an already successful program. But assuming that negotiations do move forward, I want to urge you to maintain the current rate at which Cenitas would reimburse the district for, for pupil services. There are no reasons that I can figure out why other schools should subsidize this particular charter school. Budgets, as you know, are tight district-wide. Most importantly, I want to urge you to hold Cenitas to its original commitment to enroll a student population that reflects the student diversity in the district in terms of special education, other special needs, income race, and ethnicity. Schools exist to educate our children, all of our children. This is true for district schools as well as for charter and focus schools. It might take extra effort and outreach, but we've seen focus schools make this effort as part of a commitment to offer choice to all students and have their student populations more representative of the school district's population. In my mind, there's no credible rationale for allowing Cenitas to renege on this original commitment. District equity goals demand that all schools work diligently to enroll and equally educate the diverse students who live in the district. In summary, I would like to say within my last pink card, in these negotiations and in this process, do not jeopardize a successful choice that now exists at NuVista, and please hold Cenitas to its original commitments. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Okay, so that concludes public participation, and we'll move on to board communication. Board members, any comments, thoughts? Donna?
Just thank you, John, for your comments. I took your Socratic seminar twenty years ago. Good to see you again.
Other comments? Lucy, you're good?
I also want to thank you, John. You may not remember, but I met you in about seven, ninety-seven or eight, when NuVista was pretty darn new. And I think it's great what the school has been able to accomplish. And I, it is my hope that Cenitas, locating in East County, would be able to provide some, provide something for kids who may not be able to get to NuVista. So that's my hope, anyway. And thank you for speaking to us.
All right. So that's it for board communication, and we'll move right on to our first information item, six point one, graduation guidelines update.
Opportu, sorry. Incredible opportunity to bring all of these individuals up here for short stints. You know, often when we think about high school principals, who, who these all are, and they will introduce themselves here shortly, we think about the competitive nature of high schools and what that looks like in athletics and academics. So it's really an incredible opportunity to be here to share as a collective unit. One, as we started this process around graduation guidelines and the implementation, they were all very excited to come together and join and share what they're doing in their building. So we are hopeful that you will see the benefit of this as well. This is an implementation update for 2021. As you know, please don't start, okay. As you know, there are graduation guidelines that'll be implemented for 2021, the graduating class. We've been doing a lot of work over the last couple of years. This first little video that you're going to see that is about a minute is available on the website. We want to do this for, make sure that our communities at home know also that this is publicly available. Often when we talk to family members and community, we hear, what is this about graduation guidelines? We don't understand. What's the impact? So we've provided, thanks to Randy and the Communications Department, a short video for families and community. And the website is there on the bottom. So I'll just take a quick minute, okay, or not. There we go. I will take a quick minute, yes, to share that video with all of you.
Did you know a big change is coming?
New graduation requirements are play in place for the class of 2021 and beyond.
In addition of the BVSD requirements to earn 220 credits, students in the class of 2021 will need proficiency in English and math to graduate.
That's right. Before they get their diploma, they need to meet the new state standards.
Don't worry, there are a lot of ways you can show your skills, including the SAT, which you already take, as well as all discussed.
Don't like taking tests? No problem. You can show what you know through certain concurrent enrollment courses, industry certifications, or by completing a capstone project or portfolio.
Find out everything you need to know at www.bvsd.org/graduation-requirements.
And what better way to explain it than to have students do it for us? So I'll just touch base really quickly. As you know, in 2015, CD changed the graduation requirements. And actually ironically, Colorado was the fiftieth state in the nation to adopt statewide graduation requirements, and they would impact the class of 2021. The most important portion was the demonstration of proficiency in English and math and making sure that students had the opportunity for success after high school. So our team here will share a little bit about what they're doing. Most important for, for BVSD is to make sure that you, as a board and the community, understand what the menu of options are, what that looks like for a local school board, what we're doing for post-secondary workforce readiness, and what those guidelines look like. And if at any time anybody in the community has questions, certainly you can relate them back to the video or to their high schools. I'm going to hand this over now to our Assistant Director of Student Support Services, Katie Romero, who has been instrumental in organizing this as she just started last year and making sure we were ready to launch. Thank you, Dr. Crespo. Thank you, Board of Education Superintendent, for having me so that I can explain to you a little bit about the new graduation guidelines, specifically the new graduation requirement for the class of 2021. It entails a, a menu of options, testing options, a capstone option, an industry certificate, and a concurrent enrollment option. This is the actual, what you're looking at right now on the screen is the actual menu of options from CDE. Listed is the option on the left, English and math on the right, and the cut scores or the criteria that students need to meet in order to meet that graduation requirement. As you can see, the test, all of the different testing options are listed with their cut scores. The district capstone, industry certificate, and our concurrent enrollment is something that we're going to discuss as the principals come up and talk a little bit about what unique offerings they each have at their schools. The district capstone is obviously the, the biggest question because it's an individualized portfolio or a culmination of work that students use to demonstrate their knowledge, their learning in specifically English Language Arts and Math. It is aligned to the state standards, and we have an actual district rubric that everyone, all students who choose this option, will be graded on with a consistent rubric, no matter what their capstone option is. Whether they decide to do a passion project, or they decide to build something, or just demonstrate something that they have learned in a course. They will be all graded the same way on the district capstone rubric. There's one that aligns with the math competency standards and the English competency standards, and of course, with the essential skills that the state has deemed all Colorado graduates need to have in order to graduate. So concurrent enrollment is also kind of a mystery, and folks aren't quite sure what that means. Concurrent enrollment is an opportunity where students can earn high school credit at the same time they're earning college credit. We have a variety of options in the district right now. And each school, again, has their own unique set of options within their courses. Industry certificate is also something that folks don't quite understand. That's where industry awards a piece of paper, if you will, saying that a student has demonstrated the skills necessary to be successful in that industry based on the coursework that they've taken. And through Boulder Tech and Arlie will, he will show you what, what they have to offer there. So let's talk process real quick before the principals get up here and, and discuss the nitty-gritty. The process is, in the sophomore year, in the spring, when students select their courses for their junior year, they will also select an intent to what they were going to do for the performance measurement in both English Language Arts and, and Math. So they'll choose whether they want to do capstone, or whether they want to use the SAT, or AP class, et cetera. They need to choose one for each demonstration, math and English Language Arts, and they can choose different ones for those content areas. It does not have to be the same measurement. Graduation specialists are in every high school. They are tasked with tracking and making sure that they work collectively with counselors, assistant principals and principals, of course, the students and their parents, to make sure they're on track to graduate. Thank you for, for giving me this opportunity, and I'm going to have Arlie from Boulder Tech come up. Before he comes up, I want to add something. Sorry, team. So I would just want to honor the fact that Katie Romero was part of the statewide graduation guideline for 2021 implementation. She was part of that task force and really knows in depth all of the intricacies of what the state designated and what that works look like. So I just want to honor the fact that she brings a whole view to this process that didn't exist before.
Hello, good evening. My name's Arlie Huffman. I'm the Director of Career and Technical Education, and thanks for letting me speak a little bit about what Boulder Tech offers. Just as a reminder, Boulder Tech, in the eyes of the state, is not a school, a formal school. We are actually an integral part of every high school in BVSD. So students across the district have the opportunity to enroll in the CTE programs at Boulder Tech and earn industry certificates in nearly every program and a fairly wide variety of concurrent enrollment, mainly with Front Range Community College. So students can meet those LA, the, the Language Arts and Math graduation requirements in various ways at Boulder Tech. So that's short. For me, there, there's a link on this slide that will take you to a, a sheet that will show you the, the details about what each program at Tech offers. Thank you.
Good evening. James Hale, Principal, Boulder High School. Pleasure to be here. So along with some of the options that were just presented to you, I'll highlight a few offerings that Boulder High has for our students. Everything listed under academic programs. We have that option of a capstone that's available to students. And this is in addition to our newcomers program, as well as National History Day participation and our Science Fair participation. Under CTE, students in our business classes have an opportunity to compete and join our DECA program, where they also present a, a capstone at the state competition. And then finally, under concurrent enrollment, our math and language arts department all offer CU succeeds programs. And we also offer the Pathways to Teaching Program where students share their research and social action project at the end of the year.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Eric Morelli. I'm the head of Boulder Universal. At Boulder Universal, we offer a four-year comprehensive high school program, advisory program. Integrated in our eleventh grade advisory program is a capstone project. And that capstone project has two major components, a math component and a language arts component. The math component, we refer to as a student claiming their future. And what that means is students will research their potential post-secondary pathway and potential career, and also research financial aspects of that potential pathway, and also research the potential growth in that pathway. The second component is a language arts component, which we refer to as exploring your future. In exploring, exploring your future, students research and self-reflect and determine their current skill level and the future skills that they'll need to be successful in that pathway. They take both those components, and they synthesize a culminating project with our capstone committee, and they give a presentation. And our capstone committee consists of various stakeholders, such as our teachers, counselor, mentors, a group of peers, and a group of parent volunteers. And they end their junior year with this culminating project.
Good evening. My name is Ginger Ramsey, and I'm the proud principal at Broomfield High School. Similar to my colleagues, our juniors have lots of options to fulfill this requirement. What's unique for us at Broomfield High is we're starting early with a group of sophomores who will be able to get an industry certificate when they complete our geometry and construction course this year. I would invite you all to come out and see the Habitat for Humanity house that our kids are building on our site. For our juniors, we're, we are being proactive with all of the options they have. We are being proactive in having a capstone project in all of our eleventh grade Language Arts classes. The exciting part, it is in collaboration between my math and sci, and, and Language Arts teachers. And typically, they don't talk to each other very often because they're on different parts of the building, but they collaborated in order to build a capstone project that will be completed this spring. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Ryan. I'm the Principal of Centaurus High School. So when we first started the discussions about the graduation requirements, philosophically it was really important for me to keep the values of our community and the, the values of our school front and center through all the conversations and development. So practically speaking, that necessitated two things. Number one, that we had a diverse menu of options to meet the diverse needs of our student population. And the second, we wanted everything to align with our, our heart of a warrior. Okay, so as you can see there, stands for honor, empathy, achievement, respect, and triumph. And these are the things that we're trying to promote with all of our students over four years. So we have the testing options, of course, SAT, a variety of IB and AP exams that definitely speak to that achievement piece. But we also wanted to make sure that we were speaking to the triumph piece, right? And having some capstone experiences for students where it wasn't just a snapshot, a point-in-time snapshot of academic achievement, where students could grow, where students could struggle, where students could get support, ultimately persevere and triumph. So we developed ones to make sure that we have things that are available for students who chose a particular path, and I refer to them as the focus capstones. Students in our Avid program, for example, students taking CTE courses, and also students on IEPs, because that's specifically important to Centaurus High School, where students could base that on their own individual goals and growth. Then we also have what I'm referring to as the embedded capstones, and these are meant to reach a broader audience. So these are for all students in our LA eleven classes, as well as our geometry and extended year algebra classes, where students are working on projects and portfolios over the course of the second semester, again, with the support of a teacher and that growth over time. And finally, I did want to make specific mention that we will have the CLD capstone class because it's important for our English Language learners, for all of Centaurus, but then more specifically for our newcomers, as we are one of the two schools with the newcomers program now. All right, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Don Stender, the principal at Fairview High School. At Fairview High School, very similar to what you've already heard before, is that we have our testing options, SAT, IB exams, AP exams, and our capstone options. Right now, we are currently in the process of creating both algebra and geometry portfolios that are standards-based, look showing proficiency and mastery of skills and standards in mathematics, Language Arts portfolios, doing the same thing in ninth and tenth grade Language Arts, keeping them in digital lockers. And we also have capstones around Science Fair project participation, National History Day, which was today, for those of you who are in high schools, fine arts, student projects, productions, and student leadership projects, giving kids the option to look beyond what they're taking in class and to putting it into real-life applications.
Good evening. I'm Neil Anderson, the proud principal of Monarch High School. Monarch High School has a host of options, not only from the suite of options from the state, but also internally, as you can see from this slide and what my colleagues have already spoken about. But specifically, I'd like to highlight what we also do, because we have students that are experiencing life beyond our classroom hallways and classroom, and classroom walls, through travel, volunteerism, internship, jobs. And we want to honor those experiences because they're valuable in the learning process and growth of students. And therefore, we created a questionnaire that students would be able to answer that are, is built on the guiding principle from the capstone questions. Students would fill that out in reflection form, and then we have an exit interview with that individual to see how they apply their learning from their content area to life experiences and readiness for life beyond Monarch High School. Our motto is creating bright futures one student at a time. We want to honor the individual student, the individual experience, so they are ready for not only their careers, but their lives in general, including college and university. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rick Ellerton. I'm the principal of Netherlands Middle Senior. It's an honor to be here, sharing Netherlands' capstone project that we're calling Portrait of a Graduate. We will satisfy the CDE requirements in English Language Arts and Mathematics. In Mathematics for Portrait of a Graduate, students will select a career after high school and conduct a financial plan built off of an analysis of monthly cost of living, basic cost of living, and then expanded to quality of life that they would like to pursue. Some students, of course, want to make lots of money, and we're going to make sure that they understand how to get there. The Language Arts component for the project is to write an essay that will explain how Netherlands High School and the Boulder Valley School District prepared them for their career after. They will present their capstone project to our capstone committee and their families in May. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kirk Quitter, proud principal of NuVista High School. At NuVista, for twenty-six years, as John Zola mentioned, we've been providing authentic, rigorous, real-world opportunities for our students to demonstrate their learning. And we're going to continue. And what we've been able to do is actually integrate the pathways and the menu of options that CDE has provided us into, into the pathways and the supports of our curriculum. that CDE has provided us into the pathways and the supports of our curriculum at school. So we've already talked about CTE testing and concurrent enrollment. All of those are available at New Vista's SRS and some of the other things my colleagues have talked about. But every one of our graduates completes 120-hour capstone project of their own design. And the rubric for that capstone is designed that by completing that project successfully, they will have demonstrated their proficiency in English Language Arts. Integrated into our math program is an opportunity for all of our students to complete a math capstone in one of their four required classes, algebra, geometry, statistics, or choice math. So by default and by design, students are having the opportunity to present these capstones while they are at New Vista. We're also integrating the ASVAB as a testing option for some of our students who may need some additional supports. But we are committed to providing multiple pathways for all of our students to earn that diploma. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, I'm Joan Bludorn. I'm the principal of Arapahoe Ridge High School, Boulder's alternative high school. And so the job at Arapahoe is typically to support the home high schools in the graduation guidelines that they've set for their kids, and hopefully, we're able to accomplish that. When a student comes to us, we have a consult with both the parents and the student, and we review that guideline to determine whether it is, we're able to support that at our school. But typically, we see upperclassmen, so indeed, a graduation plan is typically in place for those kids. If not, we rely heavily on two of the components, one of them being Front Range Community College concurrent enrollment. We're able to actually, because we don't have as many electives at our school, we're actually able to send kids to Front Range and enjoy the college life, if you will, their senior year. If we're not able to do that, then we rely heavily on Boulder Tech, since Arapahoe Ridge and Boulder Tech share the same address, allowing kids to get a great college and career readiness. On behalf of all the principals, we want to thank you for allowing us to go through the guidelines with you tonight. And thank you.
In closing, we just want to do two things. One, make sure that our board and our community understand that our principals have a deep understanding of all of the options that are available within their school and across the district. So if families have questions, you see that there's a menu of options, literally, and we want to make sure that our principals understand how to guide students and their families, and obviously, that is the case. And then the second piece I just want to share is, it's incredibly impressive to watch these, and I say this every time I do a presentation, because I think it's important for the board to know, the professionals that we have here, I don't know if you could hear them, but every time somebody walks by, they were like, "Nice job. That was well done." And often, we get caught up in the high school component and not realizing that this group of professionals are incredible and stand up for each other and hold each other up very often, and it's a pleasure and honor to work with them. So I just want to say thank you to the board, and thank you to all of you for being here tonight. And that's our graduation guideline update.
All right. Well, thank you so much for all of you. I know you do so much during the day, so then to add even more this late at night, we're just so appreciative of you being here. Any questions? Kathy?
I noticed in a couple of the slides that there was conversation or an indication of capstones for students on IEPs. I'm just wondering if there's a consistency across the schools for how we deal with students on IEPs and capstones, because it didn't really get touched on.
Yes. So one of the benefits of having it come up a couple of times was that we were hoping that question would come up, so thank you. So regardless of what the capstone graduation guidelines look like, there is the implementation of IEPs. And part of that process that we've really benefited from is that as students are moving into their transition post-high school, that is already in place. So how do we honor the fact that the IEP is an active part of their life and their family's lives, and give it the honor that it deserves, which is being part of their transition outside of high school and in and of itself as a capstone? Thank you for the question.
And then one other question.
Sure.
How are we using ICAPS differently? Because now we're having to integrate these new graduation guidelines. I had to laugh because you alternate between guidelines and requirements.
Right.
And as we know, we can't have requirements in Colorado.
Right.
Makes me laugh, because they really are.
Right.
But I was just wondering how, as eighth and ninth graders work on their ICAPS, if there's a different way that we're working with them to integrate them into the graduation requirements, or what that looks like.
So one of the benefits of having Katie on board is that with the entire team for Student Support Services, we've really started to embed the process of NAVIANCE, which is a system, a program system, that works very closely with our Infinite Campus, I was going to say ICAP, Infinite Campus, so that students and families are able to tell early on where their students are, how do they communicate what that looks like, what their pathways are. So although ICAPS have been around for a long time, we're doing as part of the strategic plan as well, an alignment of what that looks like for families K through 12, so that it's really a journey over time. And that integration is becoming more magnified than maybe it's been in the past, based on the graduation guidelines.
Katie?
Yes. There are a few acronyms and initialisms that I am not familiar with. So what is AVID?
So AVID is Academic Advancement via Individual Determination. Advancement via Individual Determination. It's an international program, actually started out of San Diego in the early 80s. And it's really based on bringing kids the opportunity who may not have ever had the opportunity to access higher education. And it's specific through an application process. And then the students in the coursework take an AVID class where they learn to be efficacious, ask questions of staff that maybe they have never done before, and their mentors and advisors teach them how to do that in a classroom environment, so that they have higher education success, if that's the path they choose, or career with an employer, how do they advocate for their job needs, whatever that might look like. And then the expectation being that they take higher-level courses, AP, IB, things like that. We have emerging, but we have two programs and emerging a third. And our middle schools also have the program, so if you're ever interested, we'd be more than happy to tour through what those look like.
Excellent. So next one is CLDE.
Culturally Linguistically Diverse Education.
Yes.
It's nice when you can get one of them coming out, right? So that used to be the old ESL, ELL. Now it has included the culturally linguistically diverse component.
Okay. And then ASVAB.
Right. So ASVAB is the, and I can hear them over here, right? So I'm sure they're all like, "We'll do it." I'm trying to honor the fact that they've been working all day long. So ASVAB is the assessment that's used for a military entrance, and based on your score, your job, your entrance level for your work opportunity is available through that score.
And the other one I don't know is ICAP.
Yeah, okay. So Individual College Career Academic Plan.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a lot of acronyms, just.
Donna?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I had asked my three sons, it's like, no, 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 no. Anyway, and they're all engineers now, but you guys all helped prepare them. CTE, one of my sons went to Fairview. Don, you probably remember them. But they mentioned a couple of things that were missing, they thought, in their education, and you guys had nailed it tonight. It's all been included, and I thank you and honor that you've worked all day, so I'll share.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you again. Whoops. Rob, sorry.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our high school principals for being here with us this evening. Let's not take for granted how lucky we are that we have incredible leaders for our high schools. I spent eight years as a high school principal. It's as complex of a job as there is in this system, or maybe even in public education. And I just am so thankful for the job that they do and that we have such strong leadership at all of our high schools. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly recognize them and thank them.
So moving on to our next information item, 6.2, the Strategic Plan 3C. And just one note is, when we refer to strategic plan initiatives, we might want to just put a little description of what that is, because I'm not as familiar with you as you are and don't remember off the top of my head 3C or 6A, 6B.
That is really great feedback. And so as we think about that, Laura, that makes tons of sense. And so actually, I'm going to start this presentation off for Bill. And, you know, it's interesting, when we talk about this idea of academic return on investment, it is a differentiator. As we think about improving our budget processes and making sure that we're great stewards of taxpayer dollars, this idea of making sure that we look at all of our dollars and not just not new dollars that come in is incredibly powerful. So in my work in several large districts across the country and here in Boulder Valley, I will tell you that there is a very typical budget process that happens, and that's a budget process that certainly reflected the process that our district has used in the past. It starts with, as we go through the budget process, what funds are available, what funds aren't already predetermined to be spent. It then goes to, what are some of the ideas of what we'd want to use those dollars for? How do we prioritize those ideas? How do we bring those ideas forward to the board for budget approval? And then once approved, how do we make sure that we implement what those dollars are meant to be spent on? Does that sound pretty familiar, board members? That is the old process. As we move towards a process that embraces this idea of academic return on investment, there is certainly a much more rigorous process that we'll begin to use. So whenever we make an investment decision, we make an investment decision with some very specific goals and timelines defined. And so as we move forward, and as Bill and Jonathan and Carrie present to you tonight on how will our budget process be improved, how will we really embrace this idea of academic return on investment? We have been doing a lot of heavy lifting even before I became superintendent. Bill has led this work and has done an incredible job, starting with our initiative inventory that was approved prior to my hiring. But when you think about this process, where we look at funds available, we have ideas, but then we take a much more rigorous path in regards to, with an idea, what is it that we're trying to achieve? What's our objective? How would we measure whether or not what we have defined as the objective, whether or not that has been accomplished or not? How does that strategically align with our priorities within our strategic plan? There is community and feedback base that lets us know how we want to get better. Then how do we prioritize? How do we bring that forward to your approval and communicate those other processes? Then, as we go into implementation, that is no longer the last step. That when we implement, that we will have a cycle that we will predetermined on how we analyze whether or not that implementation is being done effectively, whether implementing with fidelity, whether or not we are achieving the outcomes that we'd already predetermined prior to spending the dollars, and then evaluating each and every one of our significant investments on whether or not it is working, whether we need to reinvest or refocus the efforts, or whether we need to sunset the program and use those dollars to invest in another opportunity that will help us push forward with our strategic plan and improvement for all kids. This is a critical component to our future success. We need to make sure that every resource that we have is driven towards our priorities. And I will tell you that the budgeting process, while many people, this may not come up on their radar on what you need to do, I promise you that this is going to be a differentiator for Boulder Valley schools as we move forward. And I would tell you that we already have done a lot of work in this, and we've already received some recognition, I would say, in some national publications. People are paying attention to the work that we're doing. I want to commend Bill and the team, and Jonathan and Carrie, and I'm very excited for them to give you an opportunity to get into the weeds a little bit on how we are using this process and how it's going to make us better as a school district. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Bill. Yes, we can absolutely give you a copy of that. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Now we'll get into the details of the process and what we've been doing up to this point. So the Strategic Initiative 3C is create a system to monitor and assess academic return on investment for current and future programs. So this will allow us to better understand what is and is not working, stop those things that aren't working, reinvest those dollars, and move forward with good implementation of programs. This will make us better, certainly by taking those resources and positively impacting our long-term outcomes, and invest more strategically in our activities. The sort of simplistic way of looking at this, hopefully, is maybe being able to take things off the plate of our staff, teachers, principals out there in the schools to, instead of having the layer effect of programs and initiatives, to really sort of minimize those down to the ones that are the most effective. So the timeline for the implementation of this, so right now, we're currently in the process of doing an implementation study on the literacy material adoption. We're taking the initiative inventory and all the programs that we pulled together on that and doing a review. I mean, that information's about a year and a half, two years old at this point, so reviewing that, refreshing that. Then digging into that list and doing further study on those initiatives. And then moving into the budget process going forward, wrapping all those requirements into the budget process. And again, more details on all that coming up. So next, we'll have Dr. Jonathan Dings come up and give us a little discussion on the implementation study and effectiveness. Then Carrie will discuss the inventory of those programs, where we are with that, and then I'll wrap it up with a little academic return on investment, sort of academic study on academic return on investment, and just a little discussion about that to sort of set the framework for moving forward. So with that.
So the idea behind implementation's work is that we want to study how well a program is implemented prior to making any inferences about it. When this is done effectively, we can, we can use the information to both support good implementation practice, and then from our knowledge of that, recognize when we've gotten to a point where we're implementing something sufficiently well, that we should see the benefits that we expected when we chose it in the first place. The idea that we've had, and for those of you who were at the board meeting last April, you'll recognize this information about measuring implementation with the concern-based adoption model. This model, which is from education, is research-based, involves looking at change as a process done by individuals who are implementing any change, right? While BVSD can adopt a thing, it's up to all the people working in the system to make it actually happen. The idea behind this methodology is you ask, you begin by asking surveys. You can understand people's awareness and knowledge of the thing we're asking them to adopt, as well as how hard is it? And are they using it in a mechanical, clunky kind of way, or are they moving along, getting fairly refined? Interview methodology can be used to supplement that, to dig more into, you can't interview everybody, but understanding how well practitioners are using the new tools that we have. Finally, there's a phase of observing practice, right? So it's not just what the individual experiences or what they say, but using observation to know if they've gotten beyond sort of mechanical use that we all have the first time we're using something into polished, refined use, which is where we're hoping to get. That process takes time, minimum two years in education, often through three. So as we're thinking about it, this framework helps us to understand that and give feedback to everybody in the system about how to best coach people in the next steps. So as we think about this, once we have implementation information, then it makes sense to look at program effectiveness data. While I can match up scores on tests with any particular program or the background, it makes the most sense to draw inferences about how well the dollars are at work to get the results we're hoping for after we know that something is being implemented well. So over time, by gathering information well, understanding when we're implementing a program the way that we want, this will provide relevant information for thinking about cost, which Carrie is going to talk about next.
Regarding the inventory of current district programs, how we got here, May 8, 2018, BVSD approved a contract for a consulting firm to document an inventory of initiatives. During the summer and fall- During the summer and fall of 2018, staff participated by gathering data needed to develop the inventory. The overall scope of the project was to capture specific initiatives. The intent was never to include everything in the district. For example, the list was not meant to maintain how many general classroom teachers or special education teachers we have in total in BVSD. The initial inventory list represents 251 initiatives, equating to approximately 50 million of the total 300 million general fund budget. The inventory list has been integrated into VIS LAB for staff to view, and currently, we're in the process of updating the list, as some programs have been paused while the new network structure was being built. A few examples of the data being collected are listed on the slide. The first one, program objective, should be a clear statement, what the program is intended to do. This is more broad than attaching a specific numerical target to create a result. Another example, target student population could be general, such as all students, or only special education students, or even more specific. Next, we would want to include the financial commitment, including ongoing and one-time expense, all of which is broken out by non-personnel and personnel, which would include their time. Outcome measures would note what the system is to collect and analyze the data. How are we going to measure the success of the program and what the outcome measure will be? And lastly, what is the relation to the strategic plan and priorities? Next, a visual of the original program categories. Moving from left to right, we see a number of the programs with clear objectives at 92% in total. Also shown are the number of initiatives which did not have a measurable metric or a system to collect their success. At the beginning and throughout the budget process, collection of this information will be important for the success of this work as we continue forward. And now, back to Bill Sutter.
So, academic return on investment. The concept behind this is to look at sort of what does the most good and for whom? And so, this is, you know, what are the programs? What activities are being undertaken is the most successful for which particular group of students? And then, the follow-up piece of that is at what cost? So, the idea of what this is and what this is not, right? So, it is a way to compare programs and initiatives to say, if you're investing a dollar and the result is plus one for that invested dollar, we have one program and plus two of another program, and they're targeted towards the same group of students with the same expected outcomes, then it might be a wise choice to invest more in the program that gets twice as much for that same dollar invested. That is hugely oversimplifying the work that it takes to get there, but that's the basic concept. So, another piece that this is not is it's not primarily a cost-cutting tool. So, although it could be used in the situation that you're facing budget reductions for some sort, then you would make those choices around that. But it's really about looking at the resources that you have and investing in those things that are getting the most successful outcomes. And so, this can be that very specific granular level of down to specific dollars and outcomes, or it can really just be a way to tip the scale in the decision-making process. So, it's not easy to what Jonathan was mentioning, that this can take two to three years from a program evaluation piece to do a real deep dive in something. It's not fast. It's not immune to political influence either. So, the challenge that comes with looking at programs and things that people have invested their life work in can be challenging discussions. So, making sure that it's very open and transparent is incredibly important. So, knowing the results of the program are why what they are, that program evaluation piece is really important to make sure that if you're seeing different outcomes from two different programs, is it truly because they're not, or the results are different? Or is it because that one of them wasn't implemented in the way that it was designed to be implemented? So, next, what we have is this is sort of the simple way of looking at that tipping the scale on the decision-making. So, if, not if, we can, with a high degree of certainty, identify the costs associated with the program. Now, this is going to be somewhat relative in some cases, because we're looking at hours of work that go into something at an average staff cost for a particular item. But it would give a reasonable comparable scale to say whether something is high cost or low cost. Then, with the results of the identified outcomes, you get that successful impact of whether it's changing student achievement. And so, in some of, in the quadrant, if it's low impact and low cost, then you kind of ignore it away and don't dig too far into it. If it's high impact and low cost, those are probably the things that you want to look at scaling up. The low impact but high cost, those are certainly the things that with further review, you would either sunset and take those dollars and reinvest them, or find out if it is something that is on the program implementation side to fix that program and reinvest in the implementation of it. And then, the, believe it or not, one of the more challenging ones are those ones that are both high impact and high cost, because then you really have to prioritize, because we know that we can't do everything that we want to do. And so, making those choices is really what this is all about. So, as we get into the budget process, though we are three months into it at this point, the idea that with the strategic plan, the strategic framework really drives the budget priorities, that they are one in the same. The strategic initiatives are the budget priorities. And as we integrate these AROI concepts into the budget process, it provides this consistent framework for student-centric budget proposals that are, the expectation is that at some cost level, we're not talking about small dollar amounts, we're talking about things that are more significant budget investments, but that there will be comparable information on these proposals to be able to make those choices, to step off that first in the cycle about making that decision of what initiatives to launch. On the operational side, there, we're developing the key performance indicators and benchmarks to evaluate those operational budget proposals, because certainly, it's a little bit more difficult to make some direct ties between student outcomes and some operational investments. So, as Carrie noted, the questions that were asked in the initiative inventory, they're essentially the same ones from that, but we've added, the one at the bottom I've highlighted here, the program implementation. So, we've added some questions to the budget proposal process. For example, what is the theory of action that would be used for the program? What will be observed in the classroom or school, the result of this program? And what is the timeline and expectations for review of this program down the road? So, really, it's, to distill it down, expectations around objectives, expectations around results, and expectations for review of things that are added to the budget process. The end.
All right. Great. Any, Rob?
Just by ending, I want to thank Bill again and the team for this work. You know, instituting this discipline within Boulder Valley schools, you know, will help just make it very clear, or much more clear than it is today, what and how we do business. And so, I'm excited to watch this launch. I'm excited to watch this impact our organization, and just really proud of the work our team's done.
Okay. And thank you for bringing up that this was initiated, not initiated, had to do this before you came on, but I remember when we voted on this particular contract, it was kind of expensive, but I thought it was a great idea to start doing this work. And I think it's been over a year, two years, it's been two years now, right? So, it's great to hear back and see how it's going. Questions or comments? Kathy?
Can you attach the PowerPoint to four ducks?
Yes.
And maybe, there was a slide that was Carrie's last slide that I'm just maybe tired, that I could not follow.
This one?
Yep. So, what is that telling us?
So, of the 251 initiatives that we collected, 21 of those 251 did not have a clear objective. The remainder, 230, had a clear objective. The next 61 did not have a measurable success metric aligned to that clear objective, and so on and so forth down the line. So, it was only the final group that had sort of all the pieces to move forward with where we expect to be moving forward now. So, we're going back, we're refining some of the, those initiatives, and going back and asking folks, are they still, is it still happening? Because there are some that have been, calling them paused, maybe permanently paused, it sort of depends how the network structure plays out. But then, digging in, and if some of these questions can't be asked, then that gives us an indication of something maybe we should look at a little harder as to whether it, reinvest those resources somewhere else.
And a question for later tonight is how are we measuring student outcomes when we're looking at whether these are the right return on investment?
And I think that that, we predetermined that just depending upon what the investment might be, right? And so, that, I think that those, as we get through some of our budget proposals, as we go through this budget process, we could probably give you some more concrete examples. I would just say that this slide demonstrates the need for this focus, right? That we have layers of programs, archaeological layers of programs, right? That were determined or defined by leaders at some, somewhere, some point in the history of this organization. And some of those things, we've been investing in for a long, long time, right? And then, it just becomes, well, that's what we've always done. And that's not going to cut it if we want to get better, right? And so, if you want to have tough conversations, and you don't even have of 251, only 20%, 27% of the things that we're looking at, we can answer four simple questions. Do you know what you're going to do? What would you measure to see if you're doing it? Are you collecting the data and did you actually look at it? I mean, those are not complicated questions, right? But if you don't instill that discipline in an organization, and I will tell you, school districts across the country go through that typical process, and they just keep doing what they're always doing, because they've always done it. And we're better than that. And so, again, just really excited about this work and how it can make us better.
Okay, other questions? No? All right. I'm kidding.
Well, I don't have a question. I just want to say I'm really impressed with the work that you're doing, and I think this is going to make a big difference for our students, and I also think our community is going to be happy that we're looking at how we're spending their money.
All right. Thanks. And our next item is the legislative update. And so, this is again, a standing item that we put on for every board meeting during the legislative session, which goes until the first week of May. So, if anyone has something that they heard about or want to share or have an opinion on, fire away. Got anything? Yeah, go ahead.
So, today, I listened in on the education, House Education Committee hearing, and the bill I listened to was a grant, proposed for a grant program to allow high school students to be paid as paraprofessionals and to earn concurrent enrollment credits as a pathway to teaching. And so, I've already talked to Rob and Mike, and I'm going to just send it as an RFI, but I thought it was a really interesting program. But what I saw in the graduation guidelines is we have kind of, I don't know how consistent what we do is in Boulder Valley. We have Pathway to Teaching at Boulder High, and we have, what was the other one I saw? Teacher Prep. We have different programs. I don't know that we have a consistent program, so I'll just send in RFI on that. But it was a half-million-dollar grant program. School districts have to pay 25%. State would pay 75%. It passed out of House Ed, so I thought that was interesting. And then, on Thursday, the CEA bill is going to be dropped on the teacher funding, and that's taking money out of the state land board. My understanding is the state land board's not thrilled at that idea, to put it mildly. And I guess we'll see, and Terry's out there, you can nod if I'm not doing this right, but my understanding is that after that bill drops, there'll start to be more of an effort to talk about the day of action in March. So, we should, they'll be asking the board if we support it and for positions, and so I think we'll start to see things picking up after Thursday on that issue. So, that'll be an important day when that bill drops. That's a bill, Donna, that would take money out of the state land board to help increase teacher salaries. The kicker in it is that, as I understand it, it's a grant program, and you have to, as part of the grant, explain how you're going to be able to continue that, because it's grant funding. So, that's at least my understanding so far. So, it addresses a really important issue, so we'll see what happens when it goes to House Education on Thursday. And we're still waiting for the Uniform Mail Bill to drop. So, kind of a slow day.
All right. And we had, during our legislative lunch down in Denver, we generally talked about how we weren't so thrilled about grant programs, because it didn't provide sustainable funding. So, we might want to think about individually supporting bills that we feel, you know, we can, even though it's not a sustainable funding source. So, and that always puts us in a tough position, because we all know, and we, as we do this inventory analysis, that it's very difficult to take things away. So, once we start doing it, it's very tough to roll back. That's something we might want to think about. Any other legislative thoughts to share? No? May I go through the action items?
Can you take a break after that?
Okay. All right. I'm going to read through the action items. 7.1, Approval of Minutes, January 14, 2020, Special Meeting. 7.2, Approval of Minutes, January 14, 2020, Regular Meeting. 7.3, Approval of Minutes, January 21, 2020, Special Meeting. 7.4, Approval of Minutes, January 23, 2020, Special Meeting. 7.5, Acceptance of Donation Food Services. 7.6, Amendment to the Construction Manager General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Rappahoe Bridge High School. 7.7, Resolution Regarding Sunitas Academy Contract Negotiations. Are there any items anyone would like to poll? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the items?
Motion by Kitty, seconded by Stacy.
Any questions or comments about the items that are on this? I'll just make a quick comment about 7.7, the Resolution Regarding Sunitas Academy Contract. For those of you who are following that discussion, we had given an extension with some milestones in it to be met, and one of those milestones was to sign a contract today. We weren't able to meet that milestone. We needed an extra week, which the two entities agreed on, and so, this resolution is giving us all that extension to work a little more on the contract. All right. So, should we call the roll?
Garcia is not present. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Ziz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. The next item is 8.1, 2019-20, Revised Budget. Yes? Did I say that right? Okay. Oh, right. Motion. Got it. Who wants to make a motion on the revised budget?
Do we have specific language, or can I just move to approve the revised budget?
That's fine.
Okay. I move to approve the revised budget.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our next item is Agenda Setting. This is an opportunity to bring up any topics that maybe you want to submit an RFI for, or bring into some kind of prioritization process that we'll do in a couple of months. Okay. Then our next item is, we are going to go into executive session. So do we, do I need to read that here, Laura, or can we go over to Glacier?
You should probably read what you're going into executive session for here.
Okey-dokey.
All right. So I'd like to clarify on the record that the Board of Education has issues to discuss an executive session as follows. We are going to confer with the Board's attorney concerning legal matters and to receive legal advice on specific legal questions, CRS 2464024B, and determine positions relative to matters that are or will be subject to contract negotiations, other than collective bargaining contracts, developing strategy for those negotiations, and instructing negotiators, CRS 2464024E. Could someone make a motion to go into executive session?
Is it moved?
Okay. And we need a second for that motion. Lisa? All right. And Laura, could you call the roll call?
Garcia is not present. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So that's a five-minute break, and the board members will go into gl- Glacier.